For Thursday, June 15th, 2017. At this time, we would like to have the Pledge of Allegiance and I would like to ask one of our esteemed guests, Mr. Bob Feist, if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Richard Sanders, one nation under God, individual and liberty in the interest of our world.
Mr. Feist, thank you. Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Nat Caricelli is sick. Mr. John Farahi is actually going to be out today.
Thank you.
Mr. Michael Hicks. Mr. Ed Lawson.
Here.
Chairman Bob Lucy.
Here.
Mr. Rick Murdock.
Here.
Mayor Hillary Sheeby.
Here.
Mr. Bill Wood.
Here.
And Mr. John Vineyard.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we will take, I have individuals signed in for public comment today, so I have two signed in. I have Mr. Wesley Griffin. Mr. Griffin, if you'll come up to the podium, please, and speak into the microphone. Mr. Griffin, you do have three minutes for public comment this morning, or this afternoon. Thank you.
Distinguished members of the Board of Directors of the RSCVA, I'm Wesley Griffin, and I'm here again to speak about my opposition to putting a high school on Wild Creek Golf Course. I spoke about a month ago here, and I started off my conversation, or my little talk, with just asking a very simple question, and that's, anybody make mistakes? Could I see a hand of the people that make mistakes in this audience? I think you were the only one last time that admitted to it, too. I'm not here to educate you on anything, but I am here to remind you maybe of a couple of things. One thing is that we all make mistakes. If you're not making mistakes, you're not doing anything. But we all make mistakes. But it's vitally important, when we are making mistakes, that we look at it and we say, "You know, I made a mistake there." And when we see that we've made a mistake, it's vitally important that we turn around and try and correct it as soon as possible and admit that we've made a mistake. Sometimes it takes us maybe some time to recognize that we're making a mistake, but I find it kind of hard to believe that almost anybody couldn't see that putting a high school on Wild Creek Golf Course is a huge mistake. There are some very adverse issues involved: traffic, flood control. Has anybody seen the pictures of the flooding of Wild Creek? Some people may say, "Well, that can be engineered around." Well, maybe so, but at what cost? Did WC-1 pass a tax resolution to solve flood control problems on Wild Creek Golf Course? Is that a good use of the money that was raised to build new schools for our children? We, the people of Save Wild Creek, by the way, I do have some bumper stickers here. I would encourage you all to take a bumper sticker. And if you don't take a bumper sticker, at least go to our website and see our website. We're getting some traction on it, and we're going to get more. But it's a huge mistake from any number of reasons, for any number of reasons: traffic, it's in a floodplain, it's in a flight path. I can't imagine putting 2,500 students in that flight path. There are going, we've got a lot of planes that fly right down there today, and it's going to be ever increasing. Why would we do that? Why would we destroy a facility that's been a treasure to our community for better than 40 years? Why would you do that? When you could go a couple of blocks away, get out of the flight path, solve the flood problem, mitigate the traffic problem, pay half the cost? Why wouldn't you do that? And better, and even more than that, why haven't you even looked at that? I'm told there's no Plan B. Why isn't there a Plan B? Don't we, don't we, the citizens that voted in WC-1, deserve more? At least a Plan B, at least tell us, "Well, this is, this is the best we can do." We haven't heard that. You know, there's, I'm sure all of us have read at some time or another Aesop's Fables. There's one called
Mr. Griffin?
The Lion and the Mouse.
Your, Mr. Griffin, your three minutes are up. I'm sorry.
I thought we had a little extension on that.
No.
Okay, well, if you haven't read
You can wrap it up, please.
Please go and read The Lion and the Mouse. There's a lot of wisdom in that. And I'll be back to tell you about a few more, maybe at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Next, I have Janet Phillips.
May I use the microphone?
Please. Yes, please.
So, this is an update on your investment.
Ma'am, can you speak, can you state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Janet Phillips. I'm the president and founder of the Tahoe Pyramid Bike Way. Back in 2004, RSCVA invested $20,000 in the bike way. We were just starting then, got our first section of trail built from Mogal to Verdai. The vision is to follow the Truckee River all the way from Tahoe City to Pyramid Lake, and then we're three-quarters of the way finished. So, I brought my map just to show you where we are. The green sections, and this is the same map in the brochure, are what's done, and the red sections are not. So, the focus now is to finish between Reno and Truckee. We have four miles to go. If all goes well, we'll have that built by next summer. So, two reasons I'm here: one is to alert you that when we get that connection done to Truckee, I think we're going to see a big uptick in what they now call gravel grinding: people wanting to ride from Truckee to Reno and vice versa. So, you may want to know that's coming. The other thing is, we have a $300,000 fundraising drive going on to finish the canyon. We got a $2 million grant from the State of California, but we have to raise $300,000 matching funds. We're about halfway there on that matching fund campaign. So, if you have any extra money lying around, think of us. And that's all I brought, really, was just to tell you how it's going. And then, after we finish getting connected to Truckee, we'll start working east from Sparks, but that's a much, much harder section because of private property issues. So, that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Any other, any other individuals today would like to speak during public, ma'am? And if you'll fill out a comment card after.
My name is Kathleen Schupp, and I live by the Wild Creek Golf Course. I want to know that if the mission of the RSCVA is to attract overnight visitors, how can the destruction of Wild Creek further that mission? Replacing that wonderful green space and animal habitat with a high school will not bring in tourists. If the golf course is in financial trouble, why have you not taken steps to resolve those issues? One possible step that I've been, become aware of is that you could renegotiate the affluent water bond. Is it possible that you don't want Wild Creek Golf Course to be in the black? That would better justify your sale of the property. By selling the golf course, you would be making a forever mistake. Forever gone, the entire population of Washoe County, both human and animals, will lose valuable asset. Do you have plans to replace that asset? I'm guessing that you don't. It cannot be replaced. Finding open land for a new high school has been said to be a challenge for the school district, but finding property with water for a new golf course is impossible. Since 99 holes have already been taken away from our general population, there are few choices remaining for our golf courses, golfers. Many visitors bring their golf courses, golf clubs, to Reno when they come to visit our area. After all, isn't our weather our greatest asset? I thank you.
All right. Seeing no further public comment, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the board at this time. Looking, we're on to item C, approval of the agenda, looking for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Mr. Lawson, second by Mr. Hicks. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed. Motion carries unanimously. All right, we are on to item D, overview financials and financials of the Reno Sparks Livestock Events Center. Mr. Delam.
Yep, thank you, Chairman. We are here, I want to thank our Board of Directors for coming out to this information session. We're really here to discuss today the Reno Sparks Livestock Events Center as it, how it pertains to some of our clientele, and due, due to the Reno rodeo starting today. Congratulations, Mr. Combs, on that. We have the great fortune of having some of our long-term customers in town who are here attending the rodeo. I'd like to take a moment and introduce those them. They're the ones in the hats over here on the right. Nice hats they are. First and foremost, Bob Feist. Mr. Feist is the founder of the Bob Feist Invitational Team Roping, one of the most recognized team roping events in the nation, and is also considered one of our country's preeminent rodeo announcers, and is also a publisher of Roper Sports News, a respected equine industry publication. The Bob Feist Team Roping has been coming to Reno for 34 consecutive years. We're also pleased to welcome the owners of the BFI, Mr. Corky Ullman from Southern California, and Darren Peterson, as well as his wife Kami, if she's here, if you'd raise your hands. And also from the American Team Roping Association, Mr., their general manager, Mike Sweeney, and their board member, Bob Blair. And ACTRA, as the acronym is known, they have been coming to Reno as our clients for the last 25 consecutive years. Also with the Reno Rodeo Association here today is Clint T.C. He's a member of the Board of Directors. I think the Livestock Events Center has, has been a discussion item the last few months. To refresh everyone's memory, the State's Department of Agriculture had introduced Senate Bill 340 into the legislature for consideration, and that was to give the Livestock Events Center, which is owned by the state, back to the state for its management. And 340 made it through a few discussion items, but there was no action taken. However, 340 did have some, some great attributes. It would have allowed the State Department of Agriculture to then in turn partner with the university's College of Agriculture in a, in a public partnership, which would then have given the Livestock Events Center access to a portion of the college's land that sits across Wells Avenue. There was some hurdles that were unanticipated, and hence SB 340 was put on the shelf for the time being, but however, it, it was one of the instruments that gave the concept of expanding the Livestock Events Center some hope and, and legs to it. We've asked some of our guests here today to just comment on their experiences in Reno over the decades, to give our board members who might not be familiar with the performance horse and equine industry, an overview of what this type of business means to a community, especially to Northern Nevada. And I think I would like to call on our community's friend, Bob Feist, to perhaps give us a little overview of what the industry represents today. Bob?
Thank you, Bill. It's a pleasure, first and Mr. Chairman and the board, to have us be here. I've spoken in front of this group more than once over the past 34 years, and sometimes it was recognized and sometimes not that the importance of the equestrian lifestyle. I'm very fond of Reno. I love Reno. It fits so many different events because of the size of Reno versus larger cities and states that have tried to attract some of the equestrian events. There's just so much diversity here, from Lake Tahoe to Virginia City. As a writer and a publisher, we put in there, when you come to Reno, there's far more to do here than just come to that event, and we really try and promote that. And hopefully, that the gaming and the other things that you have to offer within your community serves it right. Sometimes there's a misconception in the Western world today in horse people and equestrian people. Sometimes they see somebody in a pair of Wranglers and a hat and a boot, and they think, "Well, there's some poor rancher cowboy." Little does they know, most of those people are wearing $1,000 to $2,000 worth of clothing. And it doesn't quite seem to register sometimes with some people, that people with the equestrian world and that, that do represent a lot of dollars. It used to be, a lot of equestrian events were a poor man's pastime. They got together on the weekend to show their horses, or to show roping skills, or rodeo, and things like that. And it turned out that they, it has changed that image completely. And now, it's become pretty well a rich man's hobby. The world is very, very emotional today to the expenses and the money that is being spent within the industries. Now, the, to go to any equestrian event today and to notice the type of facilities that are being used for these events, you can see a lot of them are keeping up to date. There's some new facilities that are being built, and have been built in the last 10 years, that are totally catering to the equestrian world. And that just shows, they build the arena first, and the rooms and restaurants later. They know those people will come. If you go to a parking lot of an equestrian event today, you aren't seeing a single pickup and a two-horse trailer. You're seeing a, anywhere from a $50,000 to $150,000 rig pulling a $100,000 trailer, and they have horses in there that exceed sometimes a half a million dollars. These kind of people have pocket money. I was born and raised in the hotel and restaurant business, and I know what it is to fill room nights and to sell food. You get people to your town, it's a whole, one whole thing. You have a little extra, you have gaming involved here, which is great. And there's a formula that Fort Worth has used for, sometimes, in the horse community. And I did just a hypothetical one here, that normally, if you have each horse, they say represents three people. Someone that comes to show their horse will have their spouse or a member of their family here. All three of those people spend some money. And if you had 1,000 head of horses, which is going to be here this week, and this is not to build to the BFI and Reno Rodeo, but this is taking example of something you're familiar with. So, 1,000 head of horses here this week, times three is 3,000. And they're here for a six-day period of the real mass. It goes over a 10-day span, but let's downsize it. Be conservative with the figures, and, and you know that you've got a plus on either side of it. Say you took six days of that, and that's counting the in and out, and it's 150 a day per person that is total to be spent. So, you have a $2.7 million, and this is, again, a hypothetical figure, it may be higher or lower, but that's a 2.7. And in Fort Worth, in their study, they took that times two, because that money goes back into the community. And the people that is receiving that money, they have employees, those employees are going to spend the money back into your community. So, within this week, with that 1,000 head of horses, $5.4 million to your community. Now, is this a factor that should be considered in still keeping something that attracts events? Yes, I think it should. When I first came here, we had a portable arena out at Sid's Truck Stop west of town at the Western Village. We later moved into the fairgrounds, it was still owned by the state at that time, rented the facility there. One year, we had four seasons and one roping, one afternoon, and I decided that maybe that indoor building should be used, so we went inside. We've been inside ever since. It has not kept up with the time. It has not been maintained properly. The growth today, people don't have, again, a single trailer and a pickup. They have big tractors and rigs and 40, 50-foot trailers. That is a hardship that's been put on any type of event. Any venue around the world has to deal with that. Houston's had to deal with it, San Antonio, and many of the other big Denver Livestock Show, but they have gone ahead and facilitated that, because they know they have to keep the people there. I think you know, if you've lost, it's very obvious, you've lost some equestrian events. Some like to go to the city in the south, I forget the name of it, but it's in your state, it's a little larger than yours, but they get attracted down there because they go and they promote certain facilities. There's some facilities down there that are totally independent from the city, and they're attracting and drawing people away. In Northern California, all over California, Midstate Fair and Paso Robles, same thing, they're trying to find room to expand, to draw more. They realize the impact of the equestrian people. And the casinos to the north in Corning, they are building a whole new facility. Sacramento area, Rancho Marietta, have tried and tried to get people, they have no hotels, they don't have what Reno has to offer. You are an ideal location, especially to draw from Idaho and Utah and California. California, I serve on the vet clinic board over there in the State of California, there's over a million horses in California, and that's just that they know that are, they can register. That's not counting the people that have horses that don't have any contact and are on the books. So, over 100, or a million legitimate horses. So, that speaks for a lot. Some of the other people I know have figures that they're going to utilize that will mention big payoffs as well. The type of people that you're attracting with the equestrian people have money, trust me. And they have money in their pocket, they aren't sleeping out here in their bedroll under the trailer like some of the images of the old early West was. But the American cowboy, the American way, it's American heritage, and there's no better town to represent it than Reno. I think this is as Western and true as they come. I appreciate your time, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try and answer some.
Bob, could you, you would specifically have this, can you give us a little snapshot of perhaps some of the competition we have out there today? We talked, you talked about the city that shall not be named to the south. But tell us why that is unique in the marketplace, what's built there, and what that is, and are there any other known facilities in the West that, that compete for this business seriously?
There is a lot of them. It's, it's hard to pencil for an individual to go out and build an equestrian center and to try and make it pencil. It doesn't do it. They have to have some relation with a city like yourselves, some other source of incomes, and realize the overall wealth. But people have done that. The Los Angeles Equestrian Center has been just phenomenal down there, and the revenue that they have drawn in over the years, and they kept that, and they kept it with Griffith Park, and they know what it is to have big horse shows down there, to have ropings, rodeos. That all falls in place with them. But to, there is competition, there's a lot of, about every month, we get some kind of proposal at our newspaper that somebody is coming up with a whole new idea, and they're going to do it for their community and draw it in. Some go by the wayside, some are still active on the drawing board. And you folks started it. I mean, Reno Livestock Events Center was state-of-the-art. When you went in here, and that snaffle bit was here, and I see it's referred a lot, I wish I'd had time to review. Very good report. I commend whoever did this here. I want to go through it at length, but that's very good. But when they, they mentioned totally all the time the loss of the last snaffle bit, and, and those type of things, I hate to see them get lost, especially to Texas. We like things on the West Coast out here, but Texas draws from Texas, and that's it. I mean, and they have Oklahoma. It's, it's sad that, that this hasn't kept and maintained and let the events catch up to them. The events have outgrown you, they have overproduced you, they've become wealthier events and greater events than your facility is accommodating. And that's basically the lack of the problem here. And it's not a real showcase to bring someone up here and to show them the stall facilities and the horse facility and the sound, the lighting, there's just, you can go on and on, but it's, it's, it's too bad. It's a shame, because it is an ideal location.
Thanks, Bob. You've had 34 years of history in Reno. What do you think about the footprint that we're on now, regardless of the condition of the facility that you, you touched upon? Tell us about the 43-acre footprint that we're on, and, and, you know, are we the right size? Are we too small, too large? What, what are some of your observations and feelings there? And if any of the other gentlemen would like to speak, they're, they're more than welcome to do so.
Well, I think they're probably more involved now in this data. For your information, the board, I did sell the, the BFI years ago to Darren Peterson, Corky Ullman, five years ago. Still very much involved, still love the event. Love all equestrian events around, whether it be a rodeo or roping. I think that you've outgrown this grounds, that's for sure, and it's not, again, all entirely your fault, because of the equipment has changed today. The rodeo system has a new thing, which is very complicated to explain, but it, it gets the contestant in here for two days and out for two days. They used to come and stay all 10 days. And that was a plus and a minus, but to accommodate these rigs now, they had to do that, to get them in and out. And I think that the rodeo, God bless them, and they've done a lot of work, and they have a lot of free labor volunteers out there that do phenomenal, and they see the foresight. They're 10 days a year, or let's give them a month a year, but you have a facility that can be used 365 days a year if you want to. And I think that's where you need to gear it towards. This is probably your biggest week ever, and the biggest thing for the town as well. But maybe the rest of you.
Well, I think, I think Bob hit it on the head. When we look at the overall footprint size of it, it's just, there's just not enough space in there. And, and unfortunately, we've got an event that takes place, and it can't be here, you know, that starts tomorrow in Fallon, but there's just nowhere for, for us to put, and George gave me the number last year, because I was surprised, I planned, I'm trying to figure out how we put it in at the Livestock Events Center, and he said, "You realize there's 300 horse trailers parked out there?" He goes, "I don't know where you're going to put those at," but he goes, "They're not going to fit here." And then, and then you look at, as you've touched on also, Bob, is the stall situation. We've got to lease the facility across the road for 300 temporary stalls to go in, and then we've also got 300 temporary stalls out in Fallon, where that event is taking place. So, so we got to look at the overall footprint size of what's there right now.
And yet, Darren, you stay in Reno, even if the facility might be too small, you seem to make it work. Would, will, what will the future bring for the, the BFI in Reno?
Well, I mean, this is, this is a great opportunity. We got to talk about it last night, and this is, we love being here. We love being in a small city, as opposed to being in a larger city where we get swallowed up. I mean, this is a great relationship that we have with the Reno Rodeo. We work with them 365 days a year. There's a lot of stuff we do that doesn't take place right here in Reno, that, that we're always working towards, how are we going to do it? When are we going to do it? Who, when can we get in? How can we get in there? And then it falls back on our staffs, you know, how can my staff work till, they're going to work, I don't know what time they'll get out of there Saturday night, but that's our opportunity to get into the building and, and take care of the things that we need to take care of in there. So, the Reno Rodeo can have an event there on Sunday, and then we've got to come back Sunday night and get ready for Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday in the building. So, it's a great fit. There's just, I mean, it's so close. When you look at the other facilities that are around the country, and Bob, there's, besides the one down south, there's also one where, where we live in the wintertime called Westworld in Scottsdale, and they have went over the top. It used to be the coldest, most miserable, miserable facility there was to go to. I mean, you would look for a reason not to go there. They've enclosed it, they've heated it, they've cooled it, they put all-new lights through the whole thing, they've got, they've got TV lights in there, they've got everything you need in there, and then they built the stalls, they built, they were able to acquire other property, and they were able to put, put the rigs in there. You know, the downfall is, the hotel rooms are $300 a night when you get there, but that's the price that people pay. I mean, and people will, will pay it, they will, they will spend the money. I mean, just looking at, just the events that we've got in the next seven days, starting tomorrow, we'll pay out $3.8 million in cash and prizes.
I'm going to learn how to ride a horse better.
Even Bob said he's getting back into it now. But that's, so that's, that's where it's at. There's, the There's the amount of money and what we're doing to attract these people to come here is phenomenal. And, and, you know, and I guess fortunately and unfortunately, it falls during the same time as the rodeo, when the rodeo grounds could be filled if we weren't there. You know, and as Bob alluded to, there's a new deal where the rodeo contestants come in and come out. If it wasn't that way, I don't know what we'd do. There's no way we could put everybody in there, even with the addition of the offsite trailer parking we have down on Fourth. I don't, I still don't know where we would put.
I've been told you like our customer service, though. Tell us about that. Are you having a great experience out there, other than the size?
Yeah, I mean, you, it doesn't get better.
It's a loaded question, as you can tell.
Phil's trying to get a raise. Phil's leading into a raise, is what he's doing.
No, I'm not.
We were not always, during the Reno Rodeo either, when I first came to town here, it was in the fall, I tried to seek times when the hotels and the restaurants would want and need people. Why the event is on a Monday again, I was born and raised in the food and restaurant business and hotel. I didn't want to interfere with any pro rodeo, for one thing. I told them I'd have it on a Monday because I knew hotels and restaurants love people on Sunday night and Monday nights. And they all told me, well, good luck, but it worked. We were in Chowchilla for about four years, we went to Las Vegas, and then we were there a year. I didn't like the atmosphere, we moved to Texas, and then after Texas, we came here. So that's the way it, it's handled. But we wasn't always connected with the rodeo. Sometime back, we saw that we could team up with the rodeo, and when we did, we were two days prior to their first performance. Their first performance wasn't until Wednesday or Thursday night, and so we had plenty of time to clean up. Their success of their rodeo has just been phenomenal, and they've grown and expanded to where they've engulfed the BFI, which is great, and it's good for you, the town, and everybody else. So a lot of people that come up to watch the BFI, come up Saturday now, go to the rodeo, they're here Sunday, Monday, and there, again, these figures I gave you earlier, that formula, that's for a horse show event that doesn't have paid attendance. These people have a sellout crowd, so that's a plus above and beyond. When you talk about three people per horse, that's not counting the attendance factor that they have, or the rodeo attendance, which is one of the greater rodeos' attendance in the nation. You're outsold out this year, almost.
Couple things. Your loaded question you asked a minute ago, and it's, and the three, this is my third rodeo in Reno, I just, I moved here in two thousand and fifteen, and Rhonda and I hooked together two weeks after I came here, because she, she was two weeks newer than I was. And I'd already heard, that first two weeks I was here, I, there was horse stories about working with the RLEC. And Rhonda came, and we made a pact that day that we'll fix this, and I think we have. Rhonda is awesome to work with, we're a good team there, and we have done a lot of things that, that helped each other. And, you know, and, and then with the legislative going on earlier this year, it was like, we felt like we've made some great progresses in what we are, where we're at, and what we're doing, and then it's kind of, everything now has stopped. As for the sellout of the events and the parking issues, yes, Reno Rodeo has outgrown the facility. Our exhibit hall space is sold out. Our rodeo performances are sold out. You'd have a tough time right now of getting a ticket for the final Friday and Saturday night. There's still some available, but there're going to be obstructed views and this and that unless you know somebody. So, and, and having the BFI along with Darren's three point eight million that's coming into town, that he's paying out next week, with all our events, we're paying out over a million dollars in the next ten days. So there's a lot of economic impact of paying out prize money. In two thousand and fourteen, I was handed, from two thousand and fourteen, I was handed right after I came here, an economic impact study of, by the university on Reno Rodeo. Fifty-seven million dollar impact, ten days in Reno. That's huge for Reno. And, and we're in ninety-eighth year, we got two years, we're planning our hundred anniversary celebration now. Reno Rodeo is going to be in Reno, Nevada, and I would go out and say that's going to be for the next hundred years. We moved our parade, we, we've adjusted with that. Thank you very much, Mayor. But it's in midtown, we're excited, it's going to be bigger and better than it was last year. But it's just, it's, we're a destination rodeo among six hundred and fifty rodeos in the country, and we're the fourth largest. And we want to continue and be part of Reno and grow, but we need more parking, we need, we need some of these things, because we just, we've outgrown the facility the way it is today.
Thanks, George. You know, in prep, in preparing some standard questions to stimulate some conversation, one, one question that came up is hypothetically, if you had just a million dollars to spend on the Livestock Events Center today, what would you spend it on? Mr. Sweeney? And by the way, for the record, Bob Blair, president of ACTRA, I may have overlooked you in my earlier remarks, sorry.
Well, you know, Bob and Darren, they, they have told you a lot of the things that I could sit here and tell you the thing about, that we're running into. We came here twenty-five years ago, we're celebrating thirty-five, our thirty-fifth anniversary this year, and we bounced all over, we were in the south part of Nevada and stuff like that. And when we came here twenty-five years ago, we had been rained out in Las Vegas, they had no places for us to go indoors. We were rained out two years in a row, one of the driest cities in the nation, and an old cowboy from Texas says, we got to find us a place with a roof. And so, he said, I know about a place up in Reno. So he came up here and made a deal with the Livestock Events Center. We brought our event up here, holding our breath, because we didn't know how we were going to pay for it. We used one parking lot out there, but twenty-five years ago, as Bob said, the rigs weren't near as big as they are now. Because of the relationship, and because of the venue and stuff like that, twenty-five years ago, we weren't that big, probably Oregon, Washington, Arizona, Nevada. Our membership now expands all the way into British Columbia, Hawaii, we have a huge contingency all the way to the east, to Colorado, Wyoming, and we bring fifteen hundred contestants here. I like those numbers, they're a little bit better than the ones I have, Bob, so I'm going to, I'm going to use your numbers in the future. But we are here for seven days. We are a small nonprofit organization, our entry fees aren't as much as, as some of the other ones, but it gives the guys the opportunity, and this is a big thing, you guys, you have to really realize this, you know, to have an opportunity to run down the arena, the same place that the Bob Feis has held. Last year, we had cowboys, young cowboys, amateur cowboys, not only win a championship and beat a thousand teams in Reno, Nevada, but they got introduced by Bob Feis. Bob, I want to thank you again for taking your time out and coming, helping us up here. But what we started with was very little. We had to sublet the arena out to the barrel racers, just to pay for it. And because of the success of, of this facility, the partnership that we have built with the casinos, the Livestock Events Center, and, and what they do to make this a successful event, I have to tell you, we are busting at the seams. A few years ago, we had a million dollar payout, which was almost unheard of. It wasn't even in our dreams, you know, twenty-five years ago. So we've grown a lot, we are, like I mentioned, a nonprofit organization, our, our motto is where families come to rope, and they come to vacation in Reno, and so a few years ago, maybe several years ago, you guys were changing your image as not just a gambling town, but a place where families could come. You talked about Tahoe and stuff like that. Well, we thought, you know, that's really smart, we're going to do that. So we advertised our national finals as bring your family here on vacation and have a chance to win a national championship. Well, we thought, well, we don't know how that's going, and we couldn't figure out, the ropings weren't really getting that much bigger, but all the stalls were filled. We have to bring five hundred additional stalls in now. But we couldn't figure out why the stalls. Well, people took our advice, they come here and brought their families here, a couple days before they roped, a couple days after they roped. And so it is really, really critical to us that we be able to continue what we are doing here. But we do, the blueprint, the footprint that you guys are talking about, every year, my biggest challenge as the manager of this association is how are we going to get everybody in here and out here. One of the biggest conversations Ron and I will have before I leave is the parking. We've been across the street, we've talked to the, the college over there, we've tried to work out things with them. Logistically, it's just very, very tough for us to do.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes, sir.
If we were restrained by staying on the current footprint that we have, forty-three acres, and you were king of the world and had a magic wand, what, what items would you like the convention authority and the Livestock Events Center to address first and foremost at the facility? What do you see as, as the things that should be immediately addressed there to satisfy your needs?
You know, there's a lot of little things, Phil, that I could talk about, but the biggest thing and the biggest challenge that we have is the parking. We have people that I honestly think probably don't come to the national finals, because it is gridlock out there. We hired people to help park, we're going to do another program again this year, but we need more land, we need more space. I was kind of excited about the college and what that could be, there's a lot of red tape involved in going over there, and, and, you know, putting some stalls up over there and stuff like that, it's a little bit difficult, but we really need more property. I mean, as far as the facility, it's a little, it's a little tattered and stuff like that. We make do, I have to tip my cap, my hat, my resistol, I guess I should say, to their staff over there, they're fabulous. I put on events in California. One of the most important things I can tell you guys, that important in, in putting on a once-a-year event, is the people that you have to work with. And we've had situations where we haven't had that cooperation, and, and it's totally failed. I can honestly say that the staff of the Livestock Events Center, since we've been here, the Reno Livestock Events Center has been fabulous. We've had our times when we didn't understand each other, but it's a true partnership, and they sat down and they invite me in every year, what can we do better? You know, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Dillon?
Any, yes, sir.
Mr. Dillon, if I may to jump in here, you know, I, I think we, we're kind of going, we're going to blend a couple of these items here on the agenda, obviously, with, you know, discussions with our, our guests today. But I'd like, you know, before we get too, too much further down the road, I want to kind of come back a little bit and have, and talk about kind of the financials and kind of where we are currently with the arena, and have that discussion right now, if we don't mind, for the board and everybody involved, so that not only the board, but our guests have a clear understanding kind of where we sit financially with the, the facility and what we're looking at. And then we can continue on with the conversations in regards to those asks and what those, and what we think would be of benefit, so, if we can do that at this time.
Thank you. So what you have before you is what was within the board budget presentation last month. So what was approved for the fiscal seventeen eighteen fiscal year, starting July one, is an operating loss of just short of seven hundred and sixteen thousand at the Livestock Events Center for fiscal year seventeen eighteen. As it relates to the current year, we're looking at a loss of about seven hundred and seventy-six thousand, and then there's six additional years of actual, if you average those years, it works out to about a five hundred thousand dollar operating loss. There's also some operating metrics, some staffing metrics, and then further down towards the bottom, it's got the capital investment that's been put into the facility over that window of time as well. Also, the city of Reno, through the two dollar fund, has committed some dollars, that's called out on there, that was related to the painting and seating that was done in fiscal thirteen fourteen, as well as some stalls that we purchased in the current fiscal year. So again, for, for the budget year, we're looking at about a seven hundred thousand dollar loss, we also have four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in capital investments and improvements for the year. Just a reminder to that front, that is largely some tables that are greatly deteriorated, some wireless, security cameras, some equipment, and then ultimately a remediation or teardown of the administrative offices at the Livestock Events Center is what that four fifty is called out towards. I'd be happy to answer any other financial questions at this point as well.
Okay, great. And also in our packet, we have kind of a summary of CapEx and deferred maintenance, and, and then the, the report that On Strategy and Ms. Olson, Ms. Olson and Mr. Olson put together for us. Who, can we go over the, the summary really quick on the deferred maintenance? Who would like to address that? Phil? Mr. Rivers?
You're referencing page one of the RSLAC CapEx Deferred Maintenance? Okay. So as it relates to that, the, the top portion of that page references what was in the approved budget, which is what I just ran through. We also have core maintenance to, which is defined as basically to maintain current business. And there's, there's really four significant pieces in sitting down with livestock staff, in particular with Rhonda, to go through what the, the highest staff level priorities are. And those four are basically the, the remainder of the paving project. So, give me one sec here. So this is a Google view of the facility. That's the parking lot that is on the north side, that hasn't been touched, I'm going to say in fifteen, twenty years. We have done this front section where you enter off of Wells, and the back section by the stalls is where, well, is the southern portion where the administrative offices are. So what's left to do and what this specific item references is this portion, basically to right here north, and we've estimated that at about a million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's not a, it would not be a slurry seal, it would be a truly dig it down, make sure that it's recompacted, regrind it, and relay it, which is what we did this year for the sections on the east and west side of the facility. So that's one of the items. Another of the items relates to the main arena. The roof is in a state of pretty significant disrepair, it leaks in a number of areas, and the other buildings have issues as well. We have that on there at about a half a million dollar price tag. I believe one of our guests mentioned the heating and cooling. We have swamp coolers that you can see on the top of this main arena, those are all thirty years old and don't necessarily work all the time. So that's another item to the tune of about half a million dollars that's called out. And then there's two hundred and fifty thousand in there to upgrade the lighting within the buildings. There's also another two point eight million that is called out on the capital improvement list, which I believe was also handed out of a variety of other items. All of these that are on this portion of the list are what we're deeming deferred maintenance, not enhancements to go get additional business. This is what we would say we need to do to, at some point, keep the facility in good standing from a safety as well as a client satisfaction standpoint.
Great. And Mr. Rivers, and I'm going to stop you really quick, I want to encourage the board, if there are questions throughout this, or to our guests, if there are any questions, please chime in at any time and add. One quick question, in regards to the, the core maintenance, so you, what we're considering deferred maintenance, that five, the five point three million dollars, that has not been budgeted for, that has not currently been budgeted for in any.
That is correct. We have, if you remember, at the retreat a year ago, there was a one point eight million dollars allocated for the Livestock Events Center. At that point, there was five hundred thousand towards deferred maintenance and a million three towards a second arena multi-use facility. At that, at this point, those funds have not been spent, but this five point three million is not funded in what was approved last month for our fiscal seventeen eighteen, just the four hundred and fifty thousand referenced above that was approved.
Thank you.
I don't know, Rhonda, if you have anything you want to add as it relates to the maintenance or condition as well?
Well, the items that are listed are absolutely at the top of our list, and there's an increasingly large list, but this sits at the top.
Okay. Mike, go ahead.
Brian, where's the breakdown again on the two point eight? The other? I was just having trouble finding that.
So you should have what's referenced is the Reno Sparks Livestock Events Center Capital Replacement Plan. It's four pages, I believe it was handed out with the packet. The total is much bigger, but if you get to the back, there's the last six items are referenced as enhancements. So there's new multi-use, Jumbotron, flat floor, vet office, that are three point two million. And some of these, this is the replacement value, some of these projects have been done. Again, we just did seven hundred plus thousand in parking, so that won't need to be done in the near term. So this is. So, this is, this five point three million that we're referencing are items that have exceeded their useful life or in need of attention today, not necessarily the total amount of improvements at the site in total, total.
Mr. Lawson?
So, I want you guys to take your cowboy hats off for a second and put on your business guy hat. But, so, I'm just looking at the numbers and, you know, let's just say that the RSCVA did have eight point five million dollars, which is what we're looking at in deferred maintenance and whatnot. And I'm looking at the room nights generated, at twenty-six thousand room nights for all the equestrian events year round. And I have a baseball field over in Sparks that has five fields we could build for about five million dollars, generates fifty thousand room nights and about twenty-five million dollars of economic impact that could go on the same spot. Not necessarily because obviously the state wouldn't allow it, but if we're looking at it from a business standpoint, what's to convince me to spend this kind of money to keep you guys here? You're telling the facility doesn't work. It's too small, not enough parking, it's in disrepair. All I've heard is the bad stuff. Give me a reason why, as a board member, I wouldn't just tear the thing down and put up baseball fields. It makes more economic sense in my mind.
What was I taking off my hat?
I'll, uh... Tell you my shiny side of it. Everything has to pencil. I mean, all of us in here are in business of some sort. And if this isn't penciling, then it has to be readjusted. You're either, you're daily rent or something. I'll have to tell you this, that there's facilities like this around the nation, and new ones going in, that are successful. They aren't baseball fields. If you don't want the equestrian people, that's fine. I would differ with a parent or any people associated with baseball to spend as much an equestrian person spends. And if they will be in the gaming parlors, if they will be at Sterling's every night or any other high-dollar restaurant in town. These people will. They go, you can't get any of the high-dollar restaurants in town during this event, this week, and because they're booked. So, what is the revenue coming back and what is funding this? Maybe the funding of this isn't enough. Maybe the rent's not high enough. Maybe the, the room tax part that they get, I don't know, to answer your question. But more money has to be put in back. There shouldn't be such a deficit, probably one of the... The biggest things too, that, we go to a lot of different event centers that, and not necessarily equestrian, baseball, basketball now, they have signature food in them. You go there, you gotta go to the garlic fries, you gotta get one of their hamburger. This food out here, you would not take your family and feed them. It's junk and it's a shame. There's concessionaires all over that would be willing to go in there and take that over and show more profit, pay more rent, pay higher rent. That new Golden One facility in Sacramento is amazing. You can go there and gourmet meal it in there. And, uh, but, but I, I don't know if that answers your questions. If it's not penciling, then that, that's your...
Well, that's where we are, really, at this point, is we're losing seven hundred thousand dollars a year. And if I'm looking at it from a business guy's standpoint, I've, I'm supplementing the equestrian events to the tune of seven hundred thousand bucks a year.
But you're losing events because it is not up to date.
I know, we're in the chicken and the eggs syndrome right, right now. So, do we throw the chicken out and start a new egg? Or do we grow this business? Or, I mean, what do we gotta do to make it work? Because I, this is way out of my expertise. Obviously, you guys deal with this every day. I'm looking for help and suggestions on a way to make this work 'cause it ain't working for me the way it is.
Mr. Murdock?
How many years has the Reno rodeo been here? Ninety-six years, wow.
Ninety, ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight. And you, we just had the economic impact studies from the rodeo and from what Bob Feis and the guys bring here. You're looking at it at a small macro way, I believe, because if it's fifty-four million in this economy, you're not taking care of just the casinos, you're taking care of the cab drivers, the airlines, you're taking care of other ancillary businesses. And I would, I would ask, what facilities around the nation, besides Madison Square Garden and Staples Center, make a lot of money? I'd really like to know. And when you look at what the Western Heritage is in Reno, Nevada, the wild, what is it, the Wild Richest Rodeo?
Wildest Richest Rodeo.
That's still famous. I go, we, I, I don't know. I'm, I'd really like to, I think we really need to look at this in a macro. It, it's bigger impact than just seven hundred thousand dollars to this community, to the community, to the region. So, I, I would ask that. Corky, do you know any facilities that, are they all running in the green? Does every convention center run in the green in the, in the United States? Phil, answer, I mean...
Corky, can I, can I get you to come up to one of the mics?
Yeah, all right, and speak loud.
I need it for the record.
What would the macro impact with the five baseball fields have at the cost of five million bucks? As compared to, we said about what, fifty-eight million is what the impact? What, what would that approximately be?
Twenty, twenty-five million.
About twenty-five, about half of...
We're, we're doing it right now in Sparks, and it makes money and it supplements about a three million dollar budget in the city of Sparks. So, I'm, I'm, I'm asking the tough question because I really want this to work. I love the rodeo and I go every year and I'm a big supporter of the entire thing with the rodeo. It's the, all the charities and everything else. So, I love that part of it. And I'm an old Nevada guy. When, I grew up in Las Vegas when there was cowboys and mafia. And so, you had to choose one. So, I had to be a cowboy. So, that's...
Are you sure?
That's where I'm coming. There might be some mafia tendencies.
Okay.
All right, this is, I have a question for our guests really quick. And I, you know, I, we've heard a couple things, and, and Mr. Feis, you brought, you brought this up. You know, the one thing I hear consistently is that the parking's a challenge and, and the footprint's a challenge. Forty-seven acres is small. I know that. I've grown up here, but I've been involved in the rodeo for my entire life. And I, the mayor and I have visited South Point. We know how big, but Michael Gahn invested five hundred million into his facility to get that facility the way it is. And it's, I mean, that's top-notch, when you can drive your trailer, you know, your five hundred thousand dollar rig into an underground parking lot, unload your horses in a, in a air-conditioned stalls, and they've got helpers down there and the field, and hands to help you do that kind of stuff. And then you go to Westworld and it's three hundred and eighty-six acres. It's got eight outdoor arenas, it's got a forty thousand square foot indoor dome for the equidome. It's got another hundred and twenty thousand square foot outdoor tent for, for the arenas. They're got size on us, but you were mentioning that there's other facilities. Are there any, any facilities around the country that are growing on a fifty, a fifty-acre parcel like we have? They're not. They're not. They're starting on a hundred and twenty-plus acres to get going. And that's, one-twenty's a small, it's a small, uh, facility.
Mr. Gahn's purchased more land as we speak, but I commend you folks for finally, and go and look at other facilities. We tried to get this, to do this twenty years ago, get some people from Reno to go look at some of these newer facilities going in. And I think it's great. It's, it's eye-opening. Do they pencil? I don't know.
I mean, we're committed. I mean, we've, I've always, I, I'll say for myself, I've been committed to the rodeo and will continue to be committed to the rodeo and the equestrian center here and, and the events that we hold. Because I feel, it, it's a, it's a personal thing for me. It's a, you know, not only being a commissioner, but it's just part of my life, being northern Nevada in my entire life, fifth generation. I've grown up with this. The point of the matter is, is that it's, we're trying to put a, a square peg in a round hole.
Yes.
And it, and I, and I don't know what that solution is. And let's take the money aside, you know, whether it's a loss of seven hundred thousand. I agree with you, Mr. Murdock. I think that there is a tremendous amount of economic value to the equestrian events in northern Nevada. There's a lot of heritage here. The point is, is how do we fix a solution? We can sit here all day and say, well, this isn't working, this isn't working, but that doesn't, that's not giving me a solution, a path forward. I need to know what a path forward is, 'cause unless I can get a hundred million dollars to go build you a tower for parking, you know, or, 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 you know, miraculously develop, you know, another hundred acres and pull that out of my back pocket for you, I don't know what we're gonna do, because we only have fifty acres to work with and a facility that is, that is already land-challenged. The county's growing around it, the university has said, absolutely not, they're not gonna give up their land. You can't buy land around it. It's, it's challenged. So, what do we do? Well, how do we move forward? And I, and I think that's one of the intents of having the, your, our guests here today is to have, because you are the experts within the industry, to tell us, how do we take our fifty-acre facility and make it so it's suitable for you, but at the same time, financially, financially feasible for us to do for you? Because I don't see, I don't, and this is being very frank, I don't see any one of the, anybody else showing up with their pocketbook saying, hey, I got a hundred million dollars right here. That's who, it's burning a hole and I wanna spend it. And I don't want it.
No, I totally agree with you. And the, an overpass or underpass maybe to the college facility that would, and also give them back money to where this is a money opportunity for the college as well, to make that and tie it in as a partnership. And there is that other ten acres, I understand, that's available up in there, two across from the grounds. But you're, you're totally right. You're limited on space. And in your baseball factor, over what time period is that?
One year.
One year, one year.
Fifty thousand rooms and twenty-five million.
Yeah, we're talking a ten-day period here, but there's so many other equestrian events that could come in here. There could be ten of these events. Now, you're talking five hundred and eighty million.
And I'm throwing that out there...
Yeah, I understand.
Because it's a success.
Yes.
And I agree with Commissioner Lucy. We wanna find a solution.
Sure.
The solution is not to just keep coming to the RSCVA for money, though. That's where we gotta find a solution.
Mayor, Mayor, see me.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Commissioner Lucy, you actually do have a big piece of land right next door to the...
Hey, I'll move the county offices, but I gotta build it somewhere else.
I, I do know of one. But first of all, I wanna say thank you so much for being here. I have to tell you, I always tell people, when you're the mayor, you hear everything. And most of the time, it's bad, unfortunately. People love to tell the mayor, you know, the bad things. I have to tell you, whenever I, I visit other communities, even at conference of mayors, so many people have said to me, wow, I've been to your rodeo, it is phenomenal, it is tremendous. One of the things that, why you talked about bringing families here and why that works, and, and to, not to your point, but kind of why economically things have changed is because we've been diversifying, right? And before, people would say, you know, they, they would say Reno and gaming, right? Now, it's completely, it's very, very different. This has become a playground for, for many things. So, I think that the rodeo has a lot of value, and certainly in the state of Nevada and in Reno particularly. Commissioner Lucy and I did go to South Point because we feel strongly that, that what you do is so significant here. Unfortunately, I think, this is certainly at the city of Reno, and everyone can attest to this, we really fell behind in the recession and we're really trying to play and catch up, just like everyone else is, right? And so, unfortunately, during the recession, there were a lot of facilities and maintenance, you know, obviously even in our roads and infrastructure and bridges, that really, we, we couldn't even maintain. So, that's been a challenge and we're just now starting to get back in the game. And I think, you know, I don't know what the solution is, but I want you to know how, how grateful we are and how much you have contributed to this region, because you guys have brought something special. Baseball can be, you know, in any park. What you guys do is, is very, very different. And so, I want you to know how much, you know, how grateful we are. And what you, and like Rick said, the ancillary benefit is huge. It's absolutely huge. And I receive letters into my office about how wonderful the Reno rodeo is and what you guys bring. So, I, I need you to know that. That's really important. What I do wonder, and I don't know if anyone has explored this, is ways, sometimes there's these models out there, like that they use it with sports teams, right? And you've seen them come in and build these big arenas in, in these cities, right? And, and sort of how they're working the deal. Now, you have to really look at them because some of them can be pretty detrimental, because they are, they're pretty significant. I think, what, what are we talking about with the, with the Raiders?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
And, right? Right? So, but that doesn't, that happens in many cities, in many cities. But obviously, you know, they're using these certain types of models and I think kind of looking at, at some different partnerships and ways to go about that. And now, I think we have to be much more outside of the box and, and innovative, because I'm not quite sure how, how we get there, right?
Mr. Peterson?
Something to, something to look at is, how many of these stadiums or these buildings do you see going up that are named? What's Michael Gahn call his? It's the Prefort Pavilion. There's a source of revenue that comes from that. It's no different than Jerry Jones in his new stadium he built in Dallas. There's, there's other things that they're doing to, to offset some of those costs by giving up a naming right or something like that facility, whether it's the entire grounds or it's the rodeo arena or it's the livestock event center. And I think you've gotta look at a bigger scale on that, not just go to the community and look for something in the community to say, hey, we wanna put our name on that, but to look at...
The baseball stadium just did that with Greater Nevada Field. I don't know what those numbers look like, but and then I know the city participated and things sort of to that, you know, magnitude. So, I, I think we can do a much better job at marketing and branding those facilities. And I think we've been a little apprehensive because we have been, you know, behind, behind the eight ball financially. But I wanna say, Rhonda, you have done a phenomenal job. That's another person that I really wanna recognize here because, again, the mayor hears everything bad and I've only heard tremendous things about you. And so, you need to really be recognized and you really did change many relationships. People keep saying Rhonda's amazing, Rhonda's amazing. So, you need to know, I, I, we really appreciate all your hard work. Done a great job.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Hicks?
Erica, did your group, you know, I was looking at the handouts and on page ten of the handout where it talks about facility analysis, and I think this might, may help answer some of the members' questions. It looked like you did some analysis on how each of the facilities have done, at least some of the facilities. Where did you get that information? What does that represent?
Erica Olson, for the record, just to call that out, thank you, Mr. Hicks. This is from the...
Yeah, it's not numbered. The page isn't numbered for us. It's, it's after page nine.
Yeah, sorry about that. Yeah, so it looks like, right? At any rate, so this is an excerpt from the strategic plan that was approved last year. And this is a combination of the analysis that we did with RSCVA staff and from Mr. Cots and CSNL. So, this specific chart is from CSNL, from his, from John Cots's market analysis and facility analysis. So, to get the detail on that, we would, we should, we would go, need to dig deeper into this, and this is an excerpt from there. Yeah.
Good, thank you. And so, guys, Mr. Delone, I think in asking, you know, the question about the magic wand or if you had a million dollars, I, I think we are all in agreement and very supportive of the Reno rodeo and this next week to ten days because of the, such dramatic positive financial impact that it brings to our community. I think what the question is, is we want more of these events. We, we need more of these events to help move the financial picture. So, the question is, you know, is it possible, is it flat-out possible to get ten more of these events that are happening over the next seven to ten days? Is that possible, given the size of the space that we currently have? And, and if it is, if it is, what would you recommend? What needs to be done, like, right now? Because that's, that's the key, is we want more events that are bringing in the revenues that you're talking about. We're all in agreement. These are, these are high-wealth net worth individuals. And we want more of them, but what needs to be done to get five more, to get ten more events, given the limited, the limited size of that, of that block, of those few blocks?
It's, it's been difficult. I have people call me and, and wanna know where they could go with a particular event. I have to be real careful about the numbers they're talking, because you can only accommodate so much in today's world with, again, with the trailers and that. The Reno rodeo, the BFI, the complimenting ropings with it, they seem to work around it. They all know. There's a lot of people come here to town that stay with fellow ranchers around here. Some of them stay as far away as Fernley and Fallon and commute every day back into here. So, it's difficult for me to try and sell the product you have in your menu now when people approach us about different things.
Because what we, what are the reasons that, that, that holds you back from selling this location?
Mainly, I'd say, the parking and the logistics and, of course, you are, you don't have a severe winter, but some of those are looking for something in the wintertime too, where it's risky sometimes to come here, not only for your tenants factor, for people coming in from the west and over... Not only for your tenants factor, for people coming in from the west and over the mountain, but, um, also the parking. And then the roof was an issue. I don't, has that been addressed or?
It's on your list.
On your roof?
Our wish list of enhancements that we need to do, improvements.
Because, uh, I know there was an event up here one time. They had to put a hold on everything because it was leaking so bad that, uh, gosh, that's a hard sell. And that, that gets back to the public and so.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Feist. Mr. Murdoch?
Just a question of, of, you guys have a lot of knowledge here. Uh, could we privatize it? I know we, you know, we, we went through the state issue, George, with you guys, but is there any idea to privatize it with the Reno rodeo and with anybody else that, and then turn that facility over and, and, and look at some kind of, uh, I mean, there was a model we were looking at with the state. And maybe there's some model here. It's called private and public partnership and, and, and you, you get after fixing it and letting real pros run it and sell it. And is there, is it become like, uh, you know, literally like a football stadium or something where you're, you're doing your ten events a year in there or you're, um, I know that it has, and this is totally, I know it can be used for other things now, especially even in the winter, the, the basketball teams actually literally can go on those, that floor. And it's a great venue for, for volleyball, quite honestly. Nobody's really thought that one out, but we can actually put sand on the dirt. You could have indoor sand volleyball, which is the hottest thing. And if you want sports, you want to talk about sports, well, there you go. There's one for you. That's it. That's three weekends when, when you probably aren't all doing anything. But should we be privatizing this thing? Is there a way to look at that angle?
I'm sure there's people that market facilities like this and venues. I don't know. Can't answer that question for you. I was up here for your, uh, wrestling thing that you have. That, that's amazing. When the kids from all over the western United States here, that was great. But you wonder what, again, what they're spending in town. It looked like a conservative type audience, but, uh, but it was neat to see the facility being used for that. I thought it was great. You have a new event coming here in September. I understand some of the people from the Snaffle Bay have come back for another new event. Are going to try and establish it here and I hope that it, it carries on.
Mr. Sweeney, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask you, um, from your standpoint, you know, we've kind of, we've kind of put Mr. Feist and Mr. Peterson on point with their questions, but I mean, what is ACTRA looking for? I mean, well, I mean, aside from parking and size, which we've already heard, you know, what other challenges, I mean, we know you utilize the indoor arena quite a bit. What would be beneficial for you? Would it be, what a different arrangement of the entire facility be a, a benefit?
Well, I mean, one of the things that we're always, uh, very concerned about and will plan, uh, so, so, is we utilize the outdoor arena. We use two arenas. In order for us to run six thousand teams in seven days, we have to utilize two arenas. We would run twenty-four, seven to be able to do that if it just came down raining and we couldn't use the outdoor facility. So we're a little bit vulnerable there if we can. You know, we dodged bullets and had to postpone and run long days and stuff. But to be able to put our event under roof totally for two arenas, that would be probably our biggest, um, we, on our wish list that, that would take that off of our, uh, what do we do if this happens type thing, you know, i- if it rains? Because, uh, we would, it would certainly be a, uh, a huge challenge for us to put our event together just in that one facility, in the one indoor arena.
Thank you. One thing I haven't heard from anybody so far is, is barns and, and capacity to, to, I mean, I mean, fill me in. I mean, are more people in, Bob brought it up. He, he, he stated, you know, obviously the equipment's changed today and today's, you know, are, are, are contestants wanting to put their animals in barns or they want to, you know, or they wanted to stable them in the trailers? Are they more comfortable stable? What do they want?
I can probably answer. We rent five hundred portable stalls. Uh, there's a source of income, you know, if you have those here. How economically feasible, you know, that is for you guys to put those in, uh, probably over a period of time, they'll more than pay for themselves. Because it's something that we have to do just to be able to house our, uh, contestants and stuff like that, so.
And how important is that, the RV parking for you guys at the, at the facility? And I mean, how important is that? I mean, do you, would you prefer to park at the facility or would you prefer, you know, find a, a facility close and be able to just park your trailers there?
Well, I think it's, that's, I mean, if you're here for the duration of the time that we're here for a week or ten days, we're probably going to go to a hotel. And the majority of the contestants just from, I mean, we can, we can put about forty trailers over at UNR and those are people that are all just dropping those trailers off and leaving and headed right to a hotel. They're going to stay. In Fallon, there's eighty-eight RV hookups out there. Every one of them's filled. I've got a reservation for every one of them out there.
Right.
But we don't have the comparable type of places to stay out there that we do in town here.
Right. So I mean, a, a potential solution would be changing maybe some of those RV, that RV area to more, to allow for more stalls and more portable stalls and, and, or more parking?
I don't think in, I mean, you've just got that one strip up there. George is go all the way. But you're, the footprint of those RV area, I mean, that's, I don't think we're going to gain enough to matter.
Well, yeah. I mean, it's still fifty acres. Right now, I'm not growing dirt.
Yeah, exactly. So I don't know that, I don't know by taking those rigs and moving them over to the lot that's down there on Fourth Street that we currently send them to to park. I mean, that's what we do. Hey, drop your horse off and go to Fourth Street and park.
Right.
And that's where they go.
Right.
So I don't, I don't think, I don't think we're, I don't think we'd accomplish enough in there. We're still gonna have, we're still gonna have, what are we gonna do with this trailer? When we unload those horses, we put another couple of hundred stalls in there.
My, I guess my question is, you know, like I said, not growing dirt. We only have fifty acres to deal with. So we gotta take some stuff out to put some stuff in. So if, if barns and stalls would be more important than taking those, that rig space out might be beneficial. Or converting that to just general parking, you know? These are the kind of ideas that I need to start working through with staff and, and this board so that we know, kind of, we can start putting numbers to those kind of changes, that it would be beneficial. Because if those RV spaces aren't as beneficial and you know, a majority of your, your participants are going to be going to hotels, which Mr. Murdoch over here is probably going, yep, that's okay with me. I want to know if that's not, if that's not being as, as useful as it could be at that facility, let's figure out a different purpose for it. You know, if it's, if it's barns, if it's more parking, whatever, what it is, that's what I'd like to know.
Well, and they're, they're full. All the RV plugins are full. And we've still got, um, with what we know of, we've still got, we're, we're somewhere between fifteen hundred and two thousand room nights for our event.
Right.
This week. That doesn't include the rodeo. That's just us.
Right. And I know, I know those, I know they're full when the events are on, but I know there's thirty other RV parks in the, in the city that can accommodate those rigs. My, my question to you, because I'm not an industry scientist, is that would those rigs be okay? Not parking at the facility, being parking at a different outside of the facility and having a barn space on property to utilize?
Let me, let me help a little bit with that. There's sixty-seven spots there. During the rodeo, the rodeo gets thirty of those that we use for our contract help, which is pickup men, you know, announcers, stuff, people that are working the rodeo in the event. So thirty of those get used for that. Rhonda, uh, rents out the other spots.
Mm-hmm.
So they're all utilized now. So there's trailers and, and vehicles parked in every one of those. So you're not gaining any footprint to park any, to use it for parking. That wouldn't benefit you at all. Um, as for more barns, uh, Rhonda did put two hundred and ten new stalls permanently in that big barn there, barn, what we call barn one, which is the, right, dead center of the picture. And so now that's a permanent stall, um, facility. And you can see the portable stalls that is put up in between that and the, um, pavilion.
Okay.
What is that?
There's a hundred, a hundred and sixty stalls. We put up a hundred temporary, a hundred and sixty temporaries and Darren puts up three hundred across the road.
Okay. So I mean, I, that's my question. I mean, is, is there any way to reconfigure fifty acres without tearing down the event, the event center as it sits? With all the, all the peripheral stuff, what can we do to reconfigure it that it would make it beneficial? Mr. Hicks, can you just say, um, that would be, that you would find it would be a significant change and you feel that it would be able to market and be utilized differently? We talked about, you know, the actual arena for the rodeo. We need to improve that obviously because of its challenges and the, the wood and, and on, on the challenges there. But what about reworking the entire, you know, you know, what does that look like? You know, are there, have you thought about that? I mean, would you move a cutting arena and move it up or do, you know, what would you do?
Parking garage would help tremendously for the patron park.
Something that doesn't cost a hundred million dollars.
Bob, this is Clint TC with Reno Rodeo. I mean, I've been involved trying to figure out what to do with this grounds and our new home for the last ten years. And I think we were on the right track with SB three forty and trying to work with the university to expand that direction in cooperation. The biggest nut was this five million in deferred maintenance. So, and for us to accept that and take on that liability was just too much for our organization.
Well, I understand.
I still think that if we're gonna stay here, that's our best bet is to try and expand on university and expand to the northwest up where the, um, Reno rendering is, if we can get that land tied up.
Right. Well, I, I mean, and I can tell you in discussions that I've had with President Johnson, that, that's just not something he's inner, going to entertain. Uh, it doesn't matter what, uh, Dean of Ag, the Dean of Ag will tell you. President Johnson has, has sat in my office and said, absolutely not, not at this point. So until that, until we either have a new president of the university or something changes, that's just not an opportunity that's out there. So what we are is we're, we're, we are dealt with the, the constraints of the forty-three acres we have to work with. Mr. Hicks, you had?
Just back to that previous slide, uh, would it, would it be possible and or amiable to convert some of that north lot, um, into more stall space? And perhaps, because I just keep thinking when the public comes, when you have spectators come, they're there for anywhere from one to three hours. They might be more likely to park at a different location and be shuttled in. You know, utilizing maybe the convention center parking. I mean, it's a little bit of a distance, but what are the possibilities of perhaps, again, adding more stall space to that lot? Um, to allow really the more of the contestants to be located near, uh, the arenas. And again, have the public park someplace else and maybe shuttle back and forth.
Good point. I think, uh, Mr. Peterson brought that up last night. We were discussing a little bit of this and that you could shuttle the spectators to the, to the event and to the rodeo. There's some events you have, uh, here that, that aren't that much in attendance wise. They're just strictly events that are utilizing the arena. But in the particular rodeo week and the BFI where they have full attendance, then you have public factor, single cars and that. But if they could be, I think it's a great idea. That rendering property, that's privately owned. Is that right? That's the green on the, yeah. And, uh, has that ever been sought to be acquired, this property?
Uh, we discussed it with them preliminarily this past year. Uh, they declined, um, selling. However, they, uh, said that they'd be, do a long-term lease with us. But, uh, we didn't pursue that until, because we wanted to make sure we were going to stay here.
That's ten acres, correct?
It's about thirteen acres that we could use.
It's a lot. Mr. Wood?
I agree with, uh, Mr. Hicks in looking at, at the possibility of using the, the grounds as much as we can to improve, uh, the facilities so that we can bring in other events. Uh, because in the end, it's not going to be successful unless it can pay for itself with those extra events. I think there is a model out there for off-site parking. Uh, if you look at any large festival, hardly strictly bluegrass for one, uh, most everybody is either transported in there with public transport or is dropped off. Um, so I think that is a viable option. Um, we, we're, we're really limited by the acreage that we've got. And without being able to improve the facilities so that we can get more events, I don't see how it's gonna work.
As for, as for the parking, uh, we do utilize, we have a partnership with the university right now. We started last year. Um, we use the parking at Pecolee Field, the baseball fields, and the university shuttle service from four-thirty till twelve-thirty daily, starting today. And, uh, it worked out really well last year and I expect it to expand because it's a seven-minute shuttle ride and it was free. And we're not, there's no cost to them at this point to park at the university where it's a ten-dollar charge at the, at the facility. So we're, we're moving towards that direction already with the rodeo because of our parking issues. And it did take the pressure off last year a little bit and hopefully more this year.
Great. Mr. Lawson?
So Phil, I think this was a good discussion today. I think we need to revisit this though in the future. And I want you guys to think outside the box. Let's just, what if we did a bond? Would you guys be willing to pay for it? And we built an all-new facility that has a rodeo arena that's covered, that you can run both your events inside. All-new stalls, all-new everything. Make this thing state-of-the-art. We still have our parking issue. We still have those things to work through. But is there a way to do that? I don't know. You know, I, I, so think from the outside, as far outside the box as you can get, where we float a bond through the county, thank you, and, uh, and you, and maybe we, we charge enough rent to make that bond payment over whatever that period of time is, thirty years or whatever. And, uh, you know, maybe we can get twenty or thirty million dollars and, and be able to do it that way.
I mean, how much will seven hundred thousand a year buy in, in the form of a bond?
Well, we're talking a million bucks a year. You should be able to get twenty-five million or so, right? Brian, twenty-eight?
Yeah, rates are still pretty favorable. I would think somewhere around twenty-four, twenty-five if I had to swag it right now.
So that's something to think about is, do we raise our rents up to where we can make a million dollar payment and we get a brand-new facility designed the way you guys want it? And we're paying now. We're, we're losing seven hundred thousand. So I, I think we need to discuss this more. And I think that thinking outside the box is what's going to solve it. And obviously parking, that's the one thing. We gave you a million bucks to spend and everyone wanted parking. Well, we can't do much with a million bucks in parking.
And that, that's part of it with,
Right.
with a million dollars, we're just putting lipstick on it.
Yeah.
I mean, let's, let's take a million, let's take some million and go start somewhere else. I mean, we put all lipstick we want. We don't have any more dirt.
Very true.
And the, the particular events we're talking about here, they're successful. They're getting by with how it is. But what attracts new, you need new people in here. That, that grounds is vacant way too much.
That's exactly right.
And we understand the challenges. I mean, we send out, we, I send out a letter, I do it myself. I send out a letter and there's a whole list of instructions on the back. Do this, do this, do this, go here, put your horse here, put your rig here, park here, go to this place, you know, and there's a whole list of instructions you gotta go through. But our clientele understands that. But the new ones that come in, if the, if somebody, if a new event got ahold of what I send out to my guys, they'd look at this and go, this is, this isn't gonna work. But our guys are used to it. They know what they've got to do. George's guys, they know where they've got to go. And we know how this whole thing works. So we make it, we make it work, but a new event's gonna look at it with a deer-in-the-headlight look.
Well, I want you guys to keep in mind from the government side too, we are having to do infill projects. We can't afford to do urban sprawl any longer because we can't afford fire stations and policemen. So this land that's around this area is going to get harder and harder and harder to get as we go on. We have fifty thousand new residents coming to us and we're right on schedule to have them all here in that five-year period. So we, uh, we have other issues and so that's why I'm saying, let's think outside the box. Let's find a long-term solution that works for everybody because it's only going to get harder after today. It's only going to get harder. I know in Sparks, we don't want any more urban sprawl. We have to use our infill. And so we're filling in those dirt lots now because we can't afford police and firemen. It's just that bad. We're, we're now, just today, we are back to two thousand and six levels of funding at the local government.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, I, I want to thank Well, ladies and gentlemen, I, I want to thank everybody for coming in. Gentlemen, I want to thank you for taking the time and I know out of your very busy time and busy, busy schedule to come and share with us today your insight. It's been truly informative for us and as a board and, and, and I want you to, I want to, one thing I want to leave you with, I, I want you to understand, um, that this board and, and this, this, uh, organization remains committed to all of our equestrian events that we held. And we really do, and within our strategic plan, want to continue to grow the equestrian business here in Reno. Uh, it's a, it's a, it's a time-old heritage deal for, for Reno. We feel we, we have some stock in it and we want to continue to see it grow. It's part of who we are as a community and, uh, but this is a changing time and to, and you've heard the concerns of a number of our board members today and, and the support of a number of our board members. But we want you to know, walking out of here, that we're, we're behind you and we just want to come to a solution. And that's why we really asked you here today is to get that kind of insight, uh, because you know and have seen what it looks like around the country and what your, and what your contestants and, and what your spectators are looking for in a facility. Uh, now you know what our constraints are, so we, we're all kind of on the same level playing field going forward. Um, you know, Mr. Combs and Mr. TC and I have had many and many conversations in regards to this and it's a real pleasure to have all of you here. Um, so thank you. And, uh, hopefully moving forward, we can have more constructive conversations and come to solution in the near future and, and really continue to grow the events and, and